I always like this.
Have you popped in the Facebook card at all? That's how I keep up on it.
I always tell people, I know you call that will send to private whatever I don't know yet.
I don't want to get lost in one of my piles.
Yeah.
I don't have a lot this morning.
Yeah.
Caught up.
How do you down?
My quality show that I recorded for myself to myself. Just asking.
I want to start around the rocks, the streets going up.
Oh, yeah.
One of these years we'll get that block.
What's it gonna take?
Twenty eight thousand, I think it was last time.
Probably fifty now. How many values going down? The deal about that this morning is national housing. Value of housing across the country is going down.
Yep.
It's found while we've got a housing shortage values going down, if that isn't assigned in place now. They keep saying denied inflation or excuse me recession, not in place for recession. Pretty good indicator, right? However, that's also got to do with the interest rates.
They're eggs and. Eggs and milk.
Of interest rates, I mean, in our lifetime, we've seen interest rates.
Not much.
Look like this money's still free.
We haven't, you haven't hit the bulk of it yet.
Exactly.
Yeah. I remember nineteen and a half.
They got out there twenty.
Never ever paid.
They overpay themselves. They're gonna be out there long.
We should dump you back to ninety nine.
A lot of good farmers.
Yes, it did.
Country crop guys. That was like country crop butter.
Yeah.
It was like one day three ninety nine, the next day it's six ninety nine.
Eggs went down.
Not much, but they're getting there.
Helping with that by giving some damn anyway.
My niece wanted two dozen eggs each summer.
Sorry, I'm starting to wait.
Are they?
I hope I tell them I need to get a cow.
Just get a goat, they're easy.
Really bigger deposits every day.
Or not smaller deposits.
I don't see myself doing that.
Well, times get tough.
It's probably your house.
Stop by for eggs.
That'd be a true example of.
Kyle and I got plenty of eggs.
The difference between a male and a female, you're never gonna get milk out of the left.
That's right. Make it okay.
Well, apparently people in this country that think it's okay. Get a, get a man a cow and see if you can get a male cow.
Yeah. You know, they, you know, they said there's the mama bull, baby bull, and the papa bull walking down the railroad tracks, baby bull standing in the middle of the train coming, which those are gonna run to mama bull or papa bull.
Mama bull or papa.
There ain't no mama bull.
There is no mama.
I think that was a fun joke in second or third grade for. Farm kids, East of City kids.
This is Western Iowa, this is. And you're Fort Western Iowa too.
Yeah.
Hey, nice, nice, nice temperatures at the fair, the butter cow didn't melt, melt.
But it looked like the turkey on a stick thing melted. I seen highlights of that.
And at Meg's event, I had an argument with the, the CEO of the turkey growers.
Yeah.
That's what I said, cause she got all smart mouth, I said it cost her, God, let's get paid back. Yeah, that was a pretty good flame.
With that?
Turkey growers burn up down their square, their stand.
Burn up overnight or what?
No, during the day.
A little, they bring the.
Yeah, I want to put fuel in the rider truck for the pork tank. Come back and walk it down and go, whoops, that's a pretty good flame, there's a lot of smoke there.
Can you pull up with a tank floor?
No, I just had the rider truck, that's our reefer truck, I just said he.
Need some bacon grease to put that out with or not?
Boy, we actually, we had new burgers this year, and I think that's the most arguable ever thing. Oh, there must be plenty of, plenty of.
Eighty five fifteen down back to eighty. That'll do it.
Yeah.
That'll do it.
Well, let's, let's call this meeting.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Here's the rest.
You can handle that, I think your name's on a lot of that. Randy Cooman's even in there this morning.
Perfect. Everybody had a chance to review the amended agenda?
Yes, sir.
Any conflicts of interest with the agenda? All right. With the reading of the minutes.
Who's that?
Jerry.
Jerry, you on there?
I'm here.
Hey.
Good morning, ma'am.
Welcome.
Morning. Morning.
You don't sound too good, girl.
I don't feel too good.
All right.
Oh, wow.
We'll try to keep this short and sweet then, Jerry.
Thank you.
Uh. Oh, no conflict of interest, we'll save the reading of the minutes.
Twenty twenty-two, the board of supervisors met at nine o'clock AM with Kyle Schultz, chairman presiding, members present were Hayden, Rosberg, Schultz, Scoob, and Bo. Meeting of previous minutes were read and approved, the board approved the clerk of court fees for twenty, July twenty twenty-two. The board approved the hiring of Andrea Taylor, family support worker in public health. The board recognized the resignation of Emily Lachner, hospice social worker in public health. A discussion was made with Chuck Edelman for the year end budget recap for fiscal year June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. Motion duly seconded, the board adjourned at ten thirty AM. Agenda for the next meeting are posted available at the courthouse on Friday at four thirty preceding the next meeting.
All right. Additional corrections to that, you need to read it again or?
I think that might be the shortest minutes we've had in years.
Ain't the waste whole paper?
You must be Carrie that makes these meetings go on.
We're gonna go with that.
Watch, she's listening somewhere.
Sorry, Jerry.
All right. Okay, well, got the minutes done, supervisor report.
You want to start first?
Jean, do you wanna start? Oh, great.
I had, whatever call, a big full week. I did take the keys over to Lynn after the meeting last week and we discussed those new hires. And neither of those were new positions and one of them is a grant so that that's actually tax dollars. We had a discussion about what needs to be done to get that building ready for them to move in. I expressed to him our importance of getting the old one cleaned out and getting moved over there. Our question that he is looking upwards right now is since we're using federal dollars for this rehabilitation. How many federal hoops we need to jump through? So he wants to hire a firm that will do all the grant asking, get all that information. And I read it over and I just feel like it's, it just seems like so much cost. I just, I don't know what we should do about that, but I'll get that on the agenda as soon as I have the answers to that. I did have a call from somebody who wondered how ten hour days at the courthouse would work and I didn't have an answer to that, so I said I would bring that up. How does that actually work or do you need to have that on the agenda for the best to answer that for me?
I guess.
The gentleman had the same call.
Okay.
I'm assuming they're talking about, I think the treasures off.
Right.
Trying to. They wanna know how it works or?
You know, when the courthouse is open a certain amount of time.
Yep.
You know, what an employee who's here to serve the people would do from seven thirty in the morning until we close. And I said, well, they do reports and they're like, what, how would that, it's not what the courthouse is supposed to be about. And they say that they wait in line the way that it is so long. And if you're only having a half staff on Mondays and Fridays, how's that gonna be beneficial to people trying to come in and do their business? They told them that, you know, supervisors, we don't get to tell other elected officials what to do, but they wanted me to find out what that's about and how many other offices are gonna take that and they just don't feel it's the best use of our taxpayer dollars. So we don't have the answer, do I need to get it on the agenda?
Well. I don't know if that's. I just. Oh, maybe something we can, as a board, if we can.
We could have them in to ask.
We can have them in to ask.
And we could ask them that, and then it would be on the record.
On a trial basis, should we find out anything about it or?
The concern is, is that when a public building is open from a certain amount of time. And there are people that they're gonna, it's gonna, people are not gonna be there. And the real concern is, is how long they wait in line now with full staff.
Right.
So if you're working when the courthouse is.
I can see this dagger chip would pose a problem of being one less or two less employees there.
They had a suggestion, but I'll probably put it on the agenda to discuss if we don't have the exact answer for us. Assured them I would act to them.
I just don't, I think a discussion is need to be had without what we can do to.
Well, it's another, another.
Another one of them elected official things.
But it is our courthouse and we have certain working hours.
But I think that if we, if we brothers, to ask how it's going and what their plan is so that it's on public record, that probably wouldn't be the work.
Would you put it on the agenda for next Tuesday, in which I will be probably joining in Zoom, but I'll, I'll give them a chance to kind of tell us how it's working. All right, so we also had our advisory board for this region. And the Ursh home is now up and ready to, remember that's at residential, more beds are available. The problem that they're having right now is that the feds have now become involved and so they have, have to have certain restrictions. It is a home in a residential neighborhood that has no signage, no press releases. It's a first time that one has been in our region, so all eyes are on it. But they're feeling like it's gonna be very successful. Sulan mental health, the building that we bought opened up yesterday and they're gonna take walk-ins right now. But the concerning thing that I had, I took some notes, I had to go to page three here and I'm gonna take all of that is how much money, and this conversation is going to come up again and I'm going to work, we're gonna talk about it at ISAC, I hope, that they're required to have therapists, nurses, mobile crisis. And there are two units that are fully staffed, they have twenty-five employees at this time. I don't have the exact dollar amount that we sent because this was just an advisory board meeting, I did not have, we don't have the budget. But the per capita of what we spend based on how many patients is unbelievable. So basically, the conversation goes that the state will eventually start putting their foot down on the budget and making sure that our funding is the last resort. So we are going to be seeing some serious changes and some tough questions are gonna be asked. And so, hold on, cause things in mental health will be changing here very, very soon, is the overview of the entire meeting. Also, let's see. Mini grants and so forth, we have a balance of two thousand dollars and they're ordering some memo pads to pay down the balance. I think that's pretty much it for this. Had another meeting on the wellness center and a good conversation about downsizing that, had some phone calls from citizens about the size of it and not sure if they, if they were thinking we were buying into soccer fields or indoor soccer, and so we're continuing that conversation.
But they don't, they don't want it happen or they do want to happen?
The person that called didn't, didn't feel that that's what the county's money was going for. And so I assured them that there's other financing lined up and that our funds are for the wellness center side of it. That the seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars that the county is giving is for the walking path and the actual structure called the wellness center. What other entities donate for, cause we've been told that there's an entity that's going to give a bucket load of money.
I don't think that's what you call it last week. They revised it, how they revised it.
In an effort to, I didn't quote exactly, bucket.
Bucket load sounds a lot more palatable for the public when it's reported on by the media. Bucket.
All right, so we're still having that conversation, but that's pretty much what I have as far as minutes.
I'm short for you.
Good job. Thanks, Jean.
Thank you, it's a busy week, very busy.
Sure. Ty?
Yeah, I didn't have a very busy week unless you wanna hear all about the state fair. But CDC, I did get a report from them, I wasn't able to attend that meeting, but I wanted to have some info for you. They got a new gift card vendor. I mean, I suppose that's more interest to the people of the community than the board, but they're, they were having some difficulties with that vendor getting everything straightened out, so they got a new one. You know, as far as financial exchange. They also said that they were contacted by Summit and was, were wanting, Summit was wanting an endorsement from our CDC and they were waiting, since I wasn't there especially, they were waiting to hear back from how the board feels about it and what kind of endorsement or actor of it, they would, you know, be authorized to. You know, but I said, you know, I said, well, I'll get back to you on that, cause I said we're having a meeting today. Tri-City, everything's going good, obviously this year they got corporate sponsors, are you stoked, Jean? Are we actually gonna have an event that's making funds?
But the concern that I have is how many managers there's still missing, being three weeks out and one of them being the manager for the stage crew. And that is, that's my husband used to do.
I'm gonna say doesn't Jerry do that?
He used to, but he cannot stand on his feet on the concrete till three o'clock in the morning and then he back up at seven. And so he told them last, a week after the thing, that he couldn't do it again and there's, he's got something.
Call Evan and that.
Yep, I'm still, maybe you could do it, Ty, Jerry will help you. He just can't.
Your girl help me.
He will, I'm still doing the green room. And not look forward to working with anyone other than my husband. He's the only guy I can push around really good.
So it was a potential lesson.
My pains coming on.
Okay, well, I'll check on that, thank you. But Smithfield is, is the title sponsor, I don't know if you've seen any of that yet. But they're, they're kicking out twenty-five K, Monogram is what we're calling a prime cut sponsor and they're sponsoring the stage on Saturday for sure. But they're also looking at sponsoring a few other things and they're up to fourteen K. And then you know, we got that twenty-five thousand dollar grant, so this is all money that'll keep helping grow Tri-City BBQ, which we've already talked about, all the four hundred, you know, that regenerates back into the community. I thought they said for four years.
It's.
It was a.
It's a big number.
Each number.
But what I would hope that you tell him is that they should try to keep some of that money as seed money so that next year.
That's what it's all for, I'm pretty sure. Supposed to pay for, continue to improve in Tri-City, nothing else. Yes, sir. Yes, Matt, we got, that was one of the questions I had. Regional load fund, I'll be brought up to Bull Alley. And how that's pretty much a done deal now, the roof stuff got settled and, I mean, it sounds like they're gonna do a remodel, the whole structure. That should really be nice.
Tells me they're.
They're going forward. And the housing development, do you know much about that, it's supposed to be kicking right up pretty quick here. I didn't know if they were keeping it for them.
I had to give something up.
Yeah, I hear you, I understand. And other than that, that's pretty much all the details that the, that the board would be interested in.
All good stuff.
Yeah, really positive, so anything bad that I would have usually commented, yeah. But don't sound like it was bad, and Iowa Pork, they wanted to help sponsor something, but getting all the stuff together. See, but last year when they had that deal with the.
They participated, didn't they?
Yeah, well, actually it was National Pork Board last year. They're the non-political entity that's out of your checkoff dollars and they do it for promotions and education or what have you. The, they sponsored that, basically it was kind of for the kids and then there was also an adult group for the, that they, where they had the pork chop cook-off deal and that was on Friday night, I believe, when they did that last year, yeah, Friday night. And they weren't gonna do it again this year, but they didn't, cause it was a serious thing, the pork chop or the barbecue series didn't have them back, so that, and that wasn't available. But Iowa Pork thought it turned out so good, they wanted to stay involved in it, didn't get everything put together, but next year Joyce is already talking to me about doing, doing more with it for next year. And good news is Crawford County's Court Producer Association didn't have a lot of people down there yet, but they haven't been present at the state fair. But you think all more and more than ten digits on your hat to count.
I was gonna say, I don't, it's been quiet.
Yeah, but this year we had some, we had, we had a contingent there for Crawford County, so I was pretty proud of that.
That's good.
And they had some pretty darn cool shirts, I gotta get all the ones.
That's cool.
But.
Fair season's over. Yep, fair season's over.
It's gonna be a four hour meeting, you know that.
No, he didn't give me a number yet, I didn't get that, I should have. Yeah, cause actually last year we did really well competing against that other, the Kansas City. Where they have a big cook-off and I'm Kansas, so anyway, that's pretty much all I got. I'm sure I'll think of something else, oh, and then the, the, the person that called me, one of their big questions was with the ten hour days was the driver's license side, which I don't think they'll do that because there's only the two people, I don't think they go for, for ten with that. It's like.
I don't know how she's, I don't know how she's working, making it work, so like.
I know that's an appointment, that's what they said, oh gosh, it's already, if I appoint them and all this, well, they're going through more people by appointment, just people actually show up and then all.
My understanding is the dri, one of the driver's license gals, at least one of them is still doing her five days a week, regular hours.
That's what I thought, I thought they, I thought they'd almost have to there, but anyway, question, another question.
What's doing, Jerry?
I don't know, I didn't ask about that, all I heard was that Lisa is working her regular hours, eight to four thirty Monday through Friday.
Thanks, Jerry. And, oh, that's all I've got.
Eric?
When did, Isaac Walton Lake, well, Kyle was up to two and you were there for the one hundred and fiftieth year, hundredth year here, but one hundred and fiftieth year for the national.
That's just hundred, hundred.
Hundred, hundred.
Hundred, maybe fifty is in Crawford County. Anyway, it's great.
So it's their anniversary, had a great turnout there, SAC was down, Ida County was down, representative and we were there. And a lot of other things going on there. And I did find out the, the Henry House has got a little problem with the boiler.
Oh, you had to figure.
With what?
With the boiler. And it's having, it's on its last leg before this or whatever, I don't know, that's about as far as I know. I'll dig into a little bit more.
Never good.
Yeah. If they have gone as far as to find out what needs to be fixed and how much, not a frantic phone call at nine o'clock at night and want to know what we're gonna do about the McKinney House, like, I think it's a board. That's about all I had.
Can I ask a question about this?
That was one forty-five.
The question that I would, would maybe entertain is I know he sold his building across.
Oh, we've been worried about buying it.
But he, when they, we used to inquire about, cause my daughter-in-law rents that, he ever wanted to sell, he's now ready to sell, he says he's.
Well, he was ready to sell, we just never had money in the budget for it.
How much did he want, do you remember?
The last thing I knew was like twenty-eight thousand, so. It's still on the radar to potentially purchase and argue a lot, just.
Think about it next year in our budget.
Time to fit it on the budget would be.
Cause he said that he was at that point now where he's ready to start, so. It's gotten teaching.
Anyways.
I'll leave that at this point though.
Jerry?
Yeah. Well, I have a couple of things, I did have my West Central Community Action Meeting last Tuesday night, but I really haven't had a good chance to review my notes, so I would prefer to give my report on that next week, if I may please. And the other thing, I did reach out to Kim about that PPE that the state had, and she has been in contact with Greg trying to, you know, figure out what they would need, so she told me thanks for forwarding that to her and they are on top of that.
Hey. Yeah.
That's it for me.
All right. We're gonna have to have some filler time here then. And while was that, I think Walton Lake deal with Eric, it was really, very well attended by the conservation board members also. Cause they had kind of showcased the new Norrelius property up there, that looked very nice, very nice addition to our conservation department's list of land, very, very nice. But since our discussion in regards to the Nelson's Park upgrade, the DNR's been out and checked our wells and it might have opened Pandora's box. They don't know a hundred percent for sure yet, but.
Waters.
The waters has not been kind of up to code for a lot of years out there already, so.
Oh, really?
Yeah. Either we put in a whole filtration system and have a certified water guy or we hook to rural water, which it could add another two hundred thousand plus to the project. But it's kind of one of those deals that is the timing maybe right with this ARPA fund, cause it still fits right in with the ARPA fund's water.
Water, filtration would be two hundred thousand or hooking up the road?
Well, I don't know, that might be more, two hundred thousand was what rural water estimated to get, get it there, so. Which then we wouldn't have nothing to do with it, you know, just pay the water bill every month and be done with it. If you put in your own water filtration system, you have somebody monitor it daily, continues.
I heard of, like, what Charter Oaks had so much trouble keeping a water maintenance guy.
Yep, yep, so. There's more talks going with that, it's kind of a take the air out of your sail type thing, but yeah, maybe the timing's right to finally fix it and get it where it's supposed to be.
Now, we have to, the user.
Yeah, so. I don't know, I just told them to continue to proceed with the plans on upgrading that place, so I. I don't know. I just told them to continue to proceed with the plans on upgrading that place, because I. I, I don't know if it's, even if we had the budget for that, we may, may pay over a couple of years to get that water thing done. I think it's important to do that. Otherwise, we're gonna have to close the park.
Yeah, they don't want to do that.
They don't want to do that. One of those things, I guess, that, you know, when they built it in sixty-four, everything was fine, but now it's like. Apparently, back in the eighties, they removed some of the hydrants just to try to stay under the radar of the DNR.
Oh, really?
Yeah. So probably it was looking at me, and we got by this many years with right or wrong.
Well, I tend to lean towards working the rural water because the long-term costs are gonna way go past two hundred thousand.
I would agree. And the upfront cost, I think, is gonna be more, you know, by the time you build a building to house that filtration stuff in. Well, you have somebody to monitor it every day. Yeah, you gotta have somebody checking every day, you know, just. And then the months when the parks basically shut down in the winter months, so then you got all that equipment. I'm just, I just have to check it every day.
I don't think rural water would be the more responsible way to look.
You know, then they were done, they were checking on those grants. I know Chris had expressed concerns about how that grant was really not made for this, but you look at who's been getting awarded these grant money and they've been getting awarded, they're kind of not really following what they say the grant's for, but I think they're just happy to get people applying for it, so. I mean, it kind of fits the, it's kind of like hammer, ground and peg into a square hole. It'll work if you hit it hard enough, you know, so.
Good analogy.
Yeah, that's the only peg you have.
It's snug.
It's the only peg you have. And then last thing, really, September sixth, did you see that with the, the meeting with the city of Denison?
Yeah.
Okay, one o'clock, Cory. And I, where are we meeting at? Because somebody, I read it and then I responded, and then I didn't find it again. It's in regards to the Communication Center, trying to figure out a way to operate that.
Is it the?
Cory. Call it down in the meeting room, okay.
Six P M?
No, it's at one, one o'clock. Just tie and I and I think Cory Snogren and.
Jessica Garcia.
Yeah, yes. Oh, so there's gonna be more involved.
There, there's, there's Cory, Brad.
Brad is just, he's the. Was this the two and two board?
The chief.
No.
Jess and then John.
Okay, so just us two? Are Sheriff or nothing gonna be there? It's us two against the, the four from the city of Denison.
We're tough.
Well, that's why I just, okay, that's fine.
Do you have the, the contract?
We don't have the bricks and mortar contract. There is no contract in regards to, really, I don't think how the operation of that defines, well, it defines that though, the city of Denison will operate the Communication Center. Sheriff will operate the jail. I mean, it's pretty, pretty vague, I mean, as far as the nuts and bolts of it, so. But I will say again, I think after we spend all this, millions of dollars on towers, I think we should have a little stronger voice in the, in the operations of it.
Well, I think the county communication, communication system should be the county's to manage and be responsible for.
But you've seen that other agreement though, that they have.
Yeah, the bricks and, I call them bricks and mortar, who pays the insurance, who scoops the snow, you know, who pays the.
That's already in place.
Yeah, that's in play.
Yes.
No, no, that ain't their concern.
It's got the operations of both entities. Don't we already have some?
We, we get a lot of registered complaints.
It just says that the city of Denison will operate the Communication Center and the county will operate the jail.
That's the way it is now.
Correct.
And.
I don't, I don't. I thank everybody that's, the ones that I've talked to are in the best interest is in the communication throughout the county. That's how I understand it, you know. They want to improve or make it better. I don't know if improvement's the right word, but it's not that it's a, operates bad the way it is. It's just, it probably can be done better. We should have a voice.
What do you think, Cal? It's probably like one of them deal where we may have too many cooks in the broth at this point. Because you got people that are making, two different entities making decisions for one singular system.
Well, I see it as a burden kind of on the city of Denison to, you know, they're paying whatever, four or five hundred thousand dollars a year to operate that thing, and I guess if it was my farm and I was supposed to manage it, manage other people's farms, well, my farm would take priority.
That's my point.
And so I'm not saying they're providing a bad service to the county, but I can see where their main interest would be in to take care of their own, their own first. It seems like just in the past, and I'm here again, no fault to them, because it's their, their deal, but when we well, I think it was the fire association, we might have partnered with that to pay to help get some fire and EMS trained dispatchers. We paid for it. I think they went, but nothing changed as far as the operations, you know, and I guess I was the police chief and said, you know what, you keep doing your job and.
At the same time, they're doing the stuff for profit. We're doing stuff. First started to put the system in, they had the, the system, the location sheets.
Oh, well, the CAD system and all that.
Well, that never got done on the continent, but it got done in Denison, but Denison wanted to see it go, so. There goes that.
Help. When you're paying the help, you take care of your, your main interest first, which I get. I don't, I'm not saying it wrong, but.
No, I, and I'm not saying.
I'm saying we are probably getting shorted because we, we, we help pay for this.
Which stuff?
That CAD system, I think about sixty thousand dollars we.
Well, it was, it was available each one of the townships all around.
I know it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
My question.
A lot of the big buildings outside the city limits are covered.
I just think it, it's not that it's more bad, it just can be worked better.
I agree with you.
Most of the time when someone calls a meeting, they're looking for, you don't bring up the problem unless you have a solution, correct? Do you feel anybody has the solution or?
You know, I, I look forward to hearing was, no, give Brandon, Brandon's perspective as being the newest eyes coming from something outside, seeing what his thoughts process.
They're eight days and notice.
You know, and Chief Snogren also has been outside of Crawford County and worked in different environments with different types of communications, so. Hopefully, they bring some different perspective to it, you know. Like, I know what I would like to see, but here again, I've been kind of brought up thirty years of way it has been operated. I've not necessarily ever agreed a hundred percent with the operation.
I think your best plan of attack is that.
That's my thought is just to listen here first, you know, and then we'll develop. Back by the exercise first.
A lot of different things.
You know, I think it might even be to where we have to take trips or leads from other counties to see what, how they all. I always wonder when.
I'm open to one manager, if you're being specifically approved, it should possibly should be.
Question.
It's good.
Hi.
And never mind the management. I mean, that, that also would be a concern, mind the management aspect.
Sure, your level, what somebody needs to, to figure out is the change of command, you know, how many people are here and here, you know, that, that seems to be the convoluted part of it, you know, between the county and city, who, how's the chain of command?
For in the communications center, we have nothing under that chain of command. I mean, that's under city Denison's control.
So there's maybe way to start, I don't think.
Well, that's. But how to make that, I agree, but how, where do you push in to get some of that control without stepping on, say, still comes out and says, well, that's our taxpayers over there. That's our dollars being spent. You guys see that pile of sand, go pound on it. But you gotta so how to, how to make that work? Well, that's the only peg you have, you know.
There we go, back to the same.
But we're at that point where I think we're trying to find the right peg that fits in that pool. Go through discussion. I, I don't think it's gonna happen overnight.
Maybe just a bigger hammer.
I think if we get, if we spread it out, others are just up there, but if we ran it under EMA, you know, if we do create this new director position, it's a full-time gig, which you're waiting doors. And if that position, you know, then, then you've got one, one initial start point for the chain of command. And then it should look after the entirety of the county. And every department, every agency that's involved in the communication system. I mean, we're gonna have probably one of the best communications systems.
Maybe look down at the all school, if you're gonna go that far.
What?
I would, you'd need to do, take a good look at that, because I think that I agree with you is that that's a, should be a full county-wide thing, because we're funding it here on this side. Well, go ahead.
That's you learn from Jake.
You guys did. But I think that creating a new position is never a happy solution once taxpayers, that we just create another solution, you know, make that tough. Because Blake man had conversations. It's gotta give more than just hire another person to see overall, because these people on this row.
Well, we won't be hiring another person. We'll just be making it the full-time position instead of a part-time.
Okay.
And then you, then you really don't need you, you, you have to have people to back you up for vacation, but then you kind of look at it. I mean, that, and now we're getting off subject.
Wherever you tried to blend anything, it's one of the biggest callbacks to doing it, because you got one side that's elected. You got one side that is appointed. They're appointed by one person, not being the mayor. The other side is that.
But what it comes right down to, Eric, I guess I and I are gonna be there. Two representatives of the elected side of the city of Denison are there. They should be able to tell their appointed people how it's gonna operate. As we would, I mean, I'm not trying.
No, but when you say appointed people, are you saying employees?
Well, when I say appointed, it'd be the, the.
Whatever they.
Yes, it'd be employee.
Whatever they do, though, they'll still come across this table.
Correct. And that's kind of where that gets a little sticky, you know, when you're talking about boards being appointed or employees that we hire. You know, when you get in your chain of command, all it goes.
It's an elected position.
I just think.
No, so I'm interested in seeing and hearing it. Trying to develop that.
We want to make it something that's better for the county. And, and I think that if we could do it, if we do it right, it'll actually be more comfortable for everybody to.
I think you're right.
You know, it's just like what you're, like with my business, I'm always looking for ways to maximize my employees, what they're doing, you know, whether it's.
And their talents.
Yeah, exactly.
And their talents.
You know, I mean, instead of having all my different divisions, you know, you can have the executive staff overseeing more different things, you know, that got more to do with their time and less idle or whatever. That's what I mean.
I think in the scheme of things, this is a very important conversation to have. Hope you guys.
And we have to bring in a unified command structure.
And that's, yeah, that's, that's a nice term.
That was a good term. Write that down.
Well, it's, it's nothing, nothing new. I mean, as.
You, who wound you up today?
My coffee.
What'd you have in the espresso this morning?
You know, that is maybe a good way to run into the tide, because we're all supposed to, the national standards for unified command is one of them. So. Still, we gotta have one leader. One.
Well, then, we're gonna have a, we're gonna have a good guy in EMA.
It's gonna be interesting. I think it's gonna be for the benefit of all the citizens. I think we're developing.
I think it's a great step towards unifying a problem that we've all kind of felt existed, but nobody ever really wanted to bring it forward until we got some new eyes looking at the inside structure of it.
Well, you know, it really started bringing light to me, is what, I think I've been saying this since we started planning this upgrade, is that and we're gonna put X million dollars into this, and it's still, we still only control everything outside of that comm center. I mean, of the city. City of Denison, not saying they would, but they said, you know what, we're just gonna close that comm center today. Our towers, all our radio equipment is useless.
Could we use ARPA funds to upgrade some parts of the comm center too? It could.
Well, I think we're planning on helping pay for our towers and radio equipment with some of the ARPA funds that we have left over, you know.
But if you're going in the direction to get an order of comm center, there's some things that I know I've looked into for grants of systems that need to be upgraded. Outside of ARPA, either, outside of ARPA. Great time to. It could be better timing. It's always a political mess, but I mean, if you've got funds, might as well make improvements.
So. We'll be.
I, I really.
Sure, you should do probably send out a list of, of people that have things to do and see what they think we need improvements in that concept.
Well, as for me, I just, just think we need to at least have some sort of voice in, in the, in the command of that thing. Right now, I mean, the, the rural, you know, like communities are kind of.
I know I get, I get.
Well, and I think that the fact that it's called this need, that's it, I agree.
Yeah, and don't get me wrong. I mean, the, the system has worked for a lot of years. Has it worked perfectly? Now, can it work better? I think so.
It'd probably help the city maximize their law enforcement dollars too, you know, where they're not spending something on something that's serving vanilla or slushy, you know what I mean?
But, you know, that was the original agreement, and it's been in place since seventy-four or whatever, and, you know, it's probably time to look at it again.
It does fall into the category of it's fully revised and it.
Yeah.
Period. Pretty much the answer to exactly, why do we do it this way? Well, it's fully revised and.
I think now's the time to, if we come out of it and everything stays the same, we should try. The service ain't gonna change if it stays the same, but it's still a service that works, not the best, but it works.
Yeah.
So. But I think the, the time is right to, at least it's taller, but fill that up.
Four minutes.
Good job, Mr. Jerry.
We got like four minutes. We really need a break. I think so.
This, we're gonna, if we have this guy, this line here is gonna be too heavy. We don't have some serious changes.
Yeah. Yeah. I agree. I probably won't be zooming in, so we move that, Dave is moving, Dave. No, I, I, Tuesdays move every day, so.
Unless something changes. My daughter and my granddaughter ended up with COVID.
Yeah, that's kind of funny, but don't prepare. We had a couple of people that came up with it. And they went old. And they went old, but the rest of us, you know, we're all around.
Well, Dwayne, you wanna, we won't take action till nine forty-five.
So we have a tax abatement application for a, um, single-family dwelling, dwelling out in the country. Or outside corporate limits. It is actually up in the, I think it's the only house in the town of Els. Or the previous town of Els, up there, it's at the Els Crossing on the, on the CN.
Perfect.
Railroad, so. So when they've done their building permit, I was there yesterday, construction has not started, so.
And fifty-one percent of it is for housing?
Um, actually be more than that, but yeah, it's quite a bit of.
Beats the.
What's the value on that?
You know, they have two hundred thousand down, it's, um, about six twenty, I'm sorry. Twenty-six hundred square foot, so it's probably more than that. Yep. So I would recommend.
I'll make that.
It was, um, it's the sixth one this year.
Gonna say.
The sixth new house out, outside corporate limits this year.
There's a motion.
And I.
No, go ahead.
And I know it, at least one more, maybe two more, so. Yeah, so.
Yes.
Well, it's a new style of housing that every just kind of.
Well, and, so when you asked your question, actually, this is a, uh, like a forty by sixty with no basement. And part of it's two-story, and then they have a, um, they already have a garage there. And they'll eventually put a breezeway connecting them.
Okay.
The garage was built, um, last year.
Okay.
So.
Cool. Was there a house there at one point?
Yes, there was, so it was the old Els, um, railroad station.
Oh.
And so they, you know, the, the history was they stopped there and they had a spot to offload livestock and. Sell or deliver or whatever.
Okay.
And had housing in the old house and stuff like that, so.
Yeah. All right, well, very good, six houses in Crawford County is pretty good.
Did you make it?
Second.
Same by Eric, moved by Jane, any further discussion? Here, none will proceed to vote on the tax abatement thirty-two fifty D Avenue, Deloitte. For David and Stephanie Malone, all the favors signified by saying aye. Aye, all opposed, all right. I know this has been asked a couple of years, how many you think new houses that we help facilitate since the.
Get some numbers together.
I think at one time you were over, well, over thirty.
I think so, yeah.
Yeah.
Perfect, thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dwayne.
All right. Kaylee, you're up. So I come on down.
How are y'all doing today?
How are you?
I'm good, y'all mind if I hand these out? Yeah, we try to make a nice. Okay, so we have three handouts here, one of them is specific to Crawford County. The other one is a project map for Crawford County, and then there is one that has Iowa at the top and that's just more informational.
Okay.
I guess I'll start by introducing myself, my name is Kaylee Langrell, I work for Turnkey Logistics. We represent Summit Carbon Solutions, mainly doing non-environmental permitting, uh, holding relationships at the county level. This is my full-time job, so going around to county board meetings, doing informational presentations. Um, so with that, I really have three things that I want to talk about today. First of all, why Summit Carbon Solutions is pursuing the project, then we'll go over these tax numbers. And then I'll give you just a brief project update, and if there's any questions, I can answer them.
Do you prefer we ask them while you're talking or wait till the end?
Um, usually it's better at the end, but if, if you think you're gonna forget, well.
All right, yeah.
Okay, okay. Um, all right, so first of all, why we are pursuing the project, I think, you know, that can be explained in two ways. So Summit Carbon Solutions was created by Summit Ag, which you probably know, the large farming company based in Iowa. Um, secondly, the strong ties between the ag industry and the ethanol industry. Especially in the Midwest, especially in Iowa, where fifty-seven percent of corn grown, uh, is sold to ethanol plants. So with this project, we do expect, uh, the ethanol plants to be able to sell into continuing, or growing markets that are going to continue to grow. Um, and in return, the corn producer would be able to sell their corn for a higher premium. Without this project, we would expect to see the ethanol plants begin to struggle. Due to new regulations that are coming down the line, and that in turn creates a ripple effect across the community. So it's gonna affect the corn producer and just regular people in the community as a whole. So. Really, the overarching goal, why Summit Carbon Solutions was created is to keep that all plants up and running and keep corn producers selling their corn for a premium. So just kind of move on to these tax numbers here. Um, these are an estimate, I'm gonna go over the Crawford County, uh, information specifically. We have a full sixty-page report, um, on our website, if you want to look more into the state of Iowa. Um. These are estimates provided by Ernst &amp; Young, uh, based on the construction and operations costs of the project. So the total estimated investment into Crawford County is around twenty-two million. And the total, uh, estimated new annual property taxes is about, uh, eight hundred fifty-five thousand, and that is an add-on form tax. Um. So moving on from that, just a brief project update, as far as construction start date, we do expect. Construction to start in late summer of twenty twenty-three, so about a year from now. Um, as far as easement acquisition in Crawford County, we are at about sixty-four percent of. Uh, easement models acquired, and that is as of last Wednesday. Um, and then permitting, uh, we are in the information, collecting information requirement space. Riley Gibson is with me, sorry, I forgot to introduce him earlier, uh, he also works for Turnkey. Did, did you have a question for me?
No, just, it's come down.
Oh, yeah.
You're welcome to.
Yeah, he might be able to help me answer some questions if you guys have. Uh, but. Uh, so we, Riley and I have both been in contact with, uh, Paul, the county engineer, just trying to get. Uh, all the information from him to make sure we submit those permits, uh, the way for us to see them. Uh, and then as far as partnerships and investors, you can kind of see that on this Iowa page. We have a couple of large investors, uh, John Deere Continental Resources are a couple of them. And then our partnerships, as of today, we have thirty-two ethanol plants across five states that we're partnered with. The five states for Summit Carbon Solutions are Nebraska, Iowa, Minnesota, North Dakota, and South Dakota. Um. Last thing I want to touch on is community investment, you can see at the bottom of this page, my name and contact information are listed. We, specific to Crawford County, um, we did send these out, we actually sent them out to all of our counties in Iowa, the landowners. Um, I did receive an email actually from a landowner in Crawford County regarding the wellness center. So that's something we're keeping an eye on, I know at the time they were looking, um, into hiring an architect, so. We're trying to keep an eye on that, because that's something that we are interested in and want to hear more about. Um, but really, the point in that is, we are an Iowa-based company, we are gonna have people living and working locally to maintain the line. So we want to plug into communities and help out in any way we can, whether that be volunteering or donations. So that's, that's all I have, I can answer questions.
So my first question would be, um, you say that you're an Iowa-based company?
Yes. We are based in, our headquarters is in Ames, Iowa.
The true company is actually out of Delaware, is, uh, state.
I believe it's incorporated in Delaware, a lot, most companies are incorporated in Delaware, just this, um, expert. I don't know if it's tax purposes or it's just an easier state to incorporate in, but that, we are.
Generally for tax purposes or work comp or other.
So it's not really a Iowa-based company? No, but it would be an Iowa-based company as far as where the partners are, uh. Incorporated in Delaware, there's nothing for.
Okay.
Yeah, so as far as Delaware, we, we don't have any people working or anything like that in Delaware, we're all in Iowa.
So when you bring people in to do the pipeline, they're highly skilled, correct?
The contractors?
The people that will actually.
Yes, yes.
And will they be staying in Iowa or will they be moving along with the pipeline?
Well, so we're gonna hire multiple construction crews and they will start, I believe. I know a little bit about everything, not a lot about any specifics, I'll just preface, uh, this with that. Um, but we will be hiring multiple construction crews and they will start simultaneously, so. Where they're working, yes, they will say, it's, you're gonna have a lot of, um, influx of construction workers in the county, uh, when they're working.
Influx.
The construction, yes, but we will hire, um, full-time people to live. I, I won't say in Crawford, um, they'll be in Crawford County, I won't say Dennis then. But to maintain the line.
You watch the pump stations, et cetera.
Yes.
It's like, it's very similar, your gas system, they got one suspect between, with.
How do you monitor the, uh, valve stations, how are they monitored, how do you know when they're erupting or having problems? What's the system for that?
So first, they are automatic, if there is a, any kind of drop of pressure or temperature change, they will automatically shut. But we also have people working twenty-four seven in our headquarters in Ames, monitoring those valve stations. So there's also a manual.
But is it like through wifi or how, how is Ames knowing what's going on underground in Crawford County at all times?
That is a good question, and if Riley.
Yeah, uh, from what I've, from my information, that there's gonna be sensors, um, everywhere they can. Detect just even the smallest amount of pressure drop. And it, it may also, and that may also trigger a complete shutdown of a valve, um, where they can isolate the issue. But if it doesn't, you know, or at the, or trigger the threshold to shut down the valve, the people in this headquarters in Ames. They have monitoring systems, access to a lot of different things, they can actually see. The pressure in different spots of the line, broken down between segments, uh, so. It's gonna be almost like a dual monitoring system where it's electronically monitored with sensors. And also a human aspect of monitoring in case, you know.
Look, so all your. So if you're monitoring from Ames, there's no local monitoring station. I assume what she was getting at when she asked wifi, do you have a direct line so that if we have a storm and that's what creates our problems or the pump station or whatever? Do we, that, that it won't interrupt your communications and you'll know that you've got a hazardous. Situation at pump three or whatever you want to call it, that's direct line to you and isn't something that we're relying on the internet. Because as we all know.
Yeah.
I sat at the state fair last week and internet's, you know, there's ten billion people on the damn thing, so you couldn't get through, so that's what, I think that was what you're getting at, okay.
Yeah, and I'll, if you want to write that question down, I can ask, because, you know.
So that.
If I can interact, I mean. Regardless if it's through wifi or fiber or phone or whatever, there's always the, the chance.
Absolutely.
That something.
But it's just interesting to know.
Right, no.
And that's a question that's.
The wifi in Crawford County is not the greatest.
I wrote that down.
But it's improving slowly, so, I mean.
I will add, I highly doubt.
That is a good question.
And that's just, well, and the other thing is, what is the temperature, the, uh, under the pipeline, what, what is that temperature? How do you monitor that, you know, as has been pointed out, Iowa has fluctuation situations in their temperatures, it's very cold and very hot.
Yeah.
What is that ideal temperature?
What's the depth?
Oh, well. Minimum four foot.
Yeah.
Yeah, but it's based on, you know, if we go and speak to a landowner and they want it lower, that's, it'll go lower, so.
What is the, that four foot, in the average soil kind of probably don't change. A lot in the state of Iowa, I mean. You know, the deeper you get, the more consistent it is up to a point, you know? The geothermal comes in because it's a constant fifty-three degrees, six foot or whatever, so. Uh, and I don't know if it is, if a four foot of it's a constant range between forty and seventy, I don't know.
Yeah. I will say, they have conducted soil testing, uh, throughout Iowa, they just have finished it, and what they were doing is basically. Checking some of the soil in crossing locations, they're gonna go onto private land and do it as well. Uh, with permission, but, uh, a lot of this is just to help develop the coating of the pipe, uh, the cathodic protection and stuff like that, that. You know, a lot of it, it's, it's gonna be pretty well-developed to handle, uh, just about any fluctuation in temperature, and it being four foot deep. But at a minimum, there's gonna be locations that are much deeper, I think we have an HDD, which is gonna be, uh, dependent on angle of the drill. Uh, much deeper than, than four foot, so of course the deeper sections aren't gonna have to worry about fluctuation as much. But they are developing the coating of the line to help protect it, uh, from fluctuating temperature in different soil conditions.
Are we too glacier-till at this point?
Developing that, it's not developed yet, they're still in the development process, it's gonna start next year.
It's one of those things that the line itself is gonna be developed as far as like the set pipe width, um, certain things like that, but. The cathodic protection and the coating of the line will be different based on the location. So that's just one of those things that they can tinker with and make sure they have it dialed in perfectly by the time the line sets in.
She mentioned you were speaking to Paul.
Yes.
I mean, kind of like Kyle just said, we're at the borderline between our glacier-till and the low sales soils. And the Los is very erosive, so, I mean, you got, I, I would like to be deeper than four foot at, at places, especially if you're close to waterways or. Or, you know, where, where water will be running so that we don't have exposed pipe at some point.
Yes.
You know, I don't plan for next year, I plan for twenty years.
Yes.
You know, I mean, that's, hopefully, if you're, if you would have a pipeline here, you guys are looking that far ahead and, and making sure that we have no problems in the future.
And I guess to piggyback on that, you know, there's low-head weirs or, or somewhere you do crosswater stream stabilizations. It would be putting some of that stuff into effect to help, and it's never perfect, but, you know, I have seen. The, the propane line that runs through the northern part, well, not really that, or north H Avenue line. Where, you know, that pipeline has been sticking out of the river for, you know, years, you know, they got a crew in there to fix it, so. And to be fair, when they put that in in sixty-four, they were probably. Seven foot below stream bed, so, I mean, I'm not saying they were wrong, but they didn't do it cheaper, they just. We're, we're changing here, so if we can help stabilize that stuff to where that don't happen.
Yes.
Always a good.
You got a question.
Go ahead.
Okay, I got a question on the taxes, you're calling new property taxes annually. Where actually is that, I mean, our property, our, our landowners pay a property tax, obviously, I mean, what, 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 where are you getting that from?
This would be a tax not paid by the landowners, it would be paid by Summit Carbon Solutions, so. What I do know, again, not a tax expert, but what I do know is that the line is centrally assessed, um, so. And basically how these were calculated, this is very confusing to me.
Like, like wind, which got a thirty-five percent break. In, in what they got to charge, are we doing the same thing here?
I don't, no, there's no kind of tax break for, for this.
Dwayne, could you help us out a little bit?
So, that, hearing your comment that it's centrally assessed, so it's like any other pipeline, it's like. The Americans pipelines, um.
Trains.
Black Hills pipelines, Manning, um, gas pipeline, so they pay an excise tax based on. What they transport, and like she says, it's a very difficult formula because it takes into consideration, you know, they're. Probably like, you know, there's the productivity, the sales, the costs, and. In the, with their net, you know, their net earnings, and then I'm sure it's capitalized at a certain amount, it's set, set by some code.
Okay.
And so that's, that was my, I was wondering the same thing, that's why I was listening, so that. State assessed and it's, it's a pipeline, just like the American Energy's power lines or, or. Black Hills' gas lines or, or the propane line you talked about that's owned by, yeah, Mapco or Williams.
That one goes across to, uh. But what's the one that goes across that, that, uh? But what's the one that goes across that, that, uh, Rickens?
One that, what's his name, cut off and then blew out? It's major, that's not, or whatever, Williams, wherever they are.
They had the big one east.
Yes, yeah.
They pay an excise tax based on what they earn or what their profit is.
Or what they earn?
Yeah, it's a, it's be a productivity on, you know, how much carbon dioxide do they capture and ship through it?
So what if they don't capture that much and we've gone through all of this and we don't?
That's a, a risk you would run.
So we.
I'm guessing if they're in spend four hundred billion or whatever they're spending, they probably are pretty confident with their numbers or.
So I don't understand the payback for Crawford County. What, how? Yeah, I know you get a huge tax credit. What is that exactly, do you know?
The forty-five Q, is that what you're?
Yeah, what, what do you get as a, a tax credit from the federal government for doing this?
That would be really how we earn our money.
With the tax credit?
Yes. So I don't know a whole lot about it, but I know that it's based on how much carbon we do capture.
You capture.
Isn't the number like four point six billion?
The total project cost, it's.
Investment is like four point five.
Billion. With a B.
And that's investors that are giving you money to, like John Deere?
Yes, we're completely privately funded.
Privately funded, but the tax. I suppose you're not. You already told us you're not a tax expert.
It, it's the same as Mid-American Energy getting tax credits.
Yeah, oh yeah, absolutely.
Love it, funds them upfront and then they gets tax credits.
But one of the questions that that's been asked me is you guys are benefiting from a huge tax credit. What is the, as, as far as you're concerned, in your opinion, the biggest benefit to private citizens for allowing you to disturb their land, to go through all of this? What? Why does Crawford County or anybody want to do this? What's your biggest sales pitch?
So I would go back to, you know, what I talked about in the beginning, why we're pursuing the project in the first place. And that's to keep corn viable and keep the ethanol plants up and running because we know that Canada is the largest purchaser. Yeah, that fifty-seven percent of corn that sold to the ethanol plants. So we know that Canada is the largest purchaser of ethanol right now and they're putting in regulations that are gonna require the ethanol plants to drop their, drop their carbon intensity scores. Whether you believe in that logic or not, they will have to drop their carbon intensity scores to sell into that market. So if they do not do this, that's gonna cause major issues for the ethanol plants and it's gonna affect the corn farmer. So.
Okay, on a local level then, for Anderson's, are they part of your partner pro- program yet? I mean, we've got our own dry ice plant here, obviously, which is using a lot of the carbon or some of the carbon. And, and then if they would be to capture their, do the plants just put it into your pipeline immediately or do they have a storage facility on hand or how's that work?
So we are providing the facility that will take the, that will capture the carbon. It's a whole system that we are providing and adding to the ethanol plant to capture the carbon, put it into a dense space so it can be transported to the pipeline.
So that would be a facility, like how did the carbon plant?
Yes. Yes.
Okay, so you.
That's the most source for them.
They're presently not a partner, Kai, but.
They're not.
They, though, as you can see, they're just flying strategically close to their facility.
Yeah, so we would.
If they were to expand their, their facility and start producing more ethanol. We understand continental carbonics is kind of maxed out as the maximum they can take now so they could kick that excess into this pipeline.
Okay, so along the lines of story, did you have something?
Yes, uh, is the map that you passed out, is that Exhibit H or how we?
No, uh, this is just the full, this is exhibit.
Okay, because I noticed that.
If you, if you have extra sheet, sort of something like that.
No, I've, I've got plenty of.
So what, on this, these little web, is that where you're gonna have your?
That is the, yes, the valve station. So those are purely the safety measures. The, um, pump stations, there's not any in Crawford County. They would be a green. Yeah.
So the question that I think is most important to the majority of people.
Yes.
Because, well, we have supervisors, so we're not here to tell people what they can and cannot do on their property. But if you have people that are adamantly, adamantly opposed to this being on their property, they have ten reasons why they don't want it. Are you gonna use eminent domain? Are you gonna force them to put this dangerous, what they consider dangerous? You guys can say it's not, but they're saying that there's been leaks, you know, in percentages. Uh, are you gonna force them to put that on their private property that they own for hundreds of years in their family?
Um, so I, I know for a fact that we have moved the line over a thousand times to, um, appease the landowners. Um, I know that we have moved off people's property onto their neighbors' properties to appease landowners. With that said, as time goes on and more people sign on, there may not be a way for us to move. So off that specific piece of land. Um, we are also working with them if they plan to present easement, you can't build a permanent, um, like a shop building or something where the line is supposed to go, you can't plant trees. So if they know they want to plant trees or build a shop in that area, we are looking, our land agents are looking into like moving it around that area, just trying to work with people as best as we possibly can.
So, uh, I asked about Exhibit H before and I know that Exhibit H is for a number of areas. Can we have it filed with the IUV?
This, this is their Exhibit H, I believe.
Well, you know, uh, there's.
Yeah.
Filed as of this morning. When do you anticipate the application?
Um, I'm not sure when it will be filed. I know that we are under, the reason why some of them are being filed right now, this is as we're required to, it's just some process, no. Um, set forth by the IUV, I'm not sure when Crawford County will be, uh, filed.
Will, uh, be able to write the board with copies of the file Exhibit H when it is uploaded to IUV system?
I can, I can sure ask when I, when I get back, I can ask.
If it's not ready, then when is it gonna be ready?
The Exhibit H is, when will it be? Um, I can definitely, I can figure that out.
That sixty-seven percent you tossed out earlier.
Sixty-four.
Sixty-four, is that for Crawford County?
Yes.
How much of the pipeline in Iowa has been secured versus the entire pipeline, this entire project?
So forty-two, almost forty-three percent in Iowa, the entire project. I don't have the exact number. I know it's between thirty and forty percent.
So you're, what was the number? You said forty percent?
Forty-two.
So Reuters reported in whatever, back, uh, in March that it was two percent. So you guys made forty percent increase in securing easements in Iowa since March.
I don't know if that number is accurate, but I can tell you that we are at, because there have been times when our numbers have been reported in Iowa. But, uh, we are at forty-two percent as of last Wednesday.
And then of the easements you were here with people in Crawford, but you know, people in Iowa generally, how much encroachment is the easement on their land? How much, what's the average kind of easement you are getting?
It's a fifty-foot easement. So, um, we do have that much workspace. We would hope not to use that much. If we don't actually, you know, we're gonna try to stay off, disturb the land as least as possible.
Sure, but it's gonna be fifty foot.
Yes.
And then if there's a rupture in the pipeline or, or just complications with the pipeline, what do you imagine would be the most common disruption or complication with the pipeline? And then what would you imagine would be the worst-case scenario?
So, I would say, um.
Not that you imagine the worst-case scenario happened, but I think, uh, things that you wouldn't anticipate, maybe they're low risk or low probability of happening, but if they do happen, it's big risks. So kind of most common.
Okay, so I would echo what you said. This, it is very unlikely. Um, pipeline transport is proven the safest method of transport, but um, most likely to happen, if there is some kind of issue, it would be that someone did call eight-one-one. And, yes, um, statistically, that's what's most likely to happen. Uh, so we will have, obviously, we're regulated to have pipeline markers. Every landowner's gonna know where their pipeline, uh, lays and along the roadside, there will be markers. Um, so yeah, I would say if someone doesn't call eight-one-one, that would be most likely. That would also be a worst-case scenario. That would be the largest.
Do you have reaction crews to repair these? I mean, and how far apart are they? I mean, is our reaction crew in North Dakota or is it?
No.
In Iowa?
No, we will have multiple, I can't tell you how many or where they will be at, because you know, they get to choose sort of where they are gonna live, you know? Um, but once the line is set in stone, we will hire, uh, people, permanent staff to maintain the line. So um, if something were to happen, they would respond and also people from AIMS would respond to that.
So back to my question of when it's set in stone, do you plan on using eminent domain? Is that, is that, that is the biggest, that absolute biggest concern that I have in Crawford County.
Well, this board had actually made, uh, made it apparent that we were against.
You are against it. There are people that are, I know in your, in your way, in your path, and it seems to me that you're still barreling on through. And if I read this correctly, these are the people that you think you're gonna have to have eminent domain on.
We don't think.
You don't think?
Uh, so the Exhibit H is, is giving a, it's a required process, but it's sending a message that we don't want to send. We do not want to use eminent domain. We don't have a pathway to it right now. We do expect to have the IUV make the decision on the state tournament. Um, or we hope to have that decision made in June of next year. So once there is a pathway to eminent domain, right now in Crawford County, we're at sixty-four percent.
Are you sure that number's right? Is like fifty-five percent is more what they updated? Sixty-four, you just all of a sudden signed all these people on? Using what tactics did you get all these people all of a sudden?
That's what last falls.
She said that's a Wednesday, sixty-four percent of the people in Crawford County that have property in that pathway have signed.
I would say the mileage, the people, the amount of people is probably, the percentages are probably a little bit different, but the, the mileage that we have.
Okay, so it's not people, it's mileage.
Easement mileage.
So, okay, little bit different. I, yeah, people in favor and people that have more miles that, that you come and entice them with money and they say, sure.
So part of the filing the petition to get, uh, basically the license from the IUV utilities for, so you file a petition and then you file a series of attachments. And Exhibit H is the attachment that you use to say, board, we've got all of these easements signed on. We are asking for the board through that particular code section to then have eminent domain. So yes, while the company may want to say that we're reluctant to use eminent domain, Exhibit H is the critical one because that's what the company will use to ask IUV for eminent domain. Um, if it comes to that down row, just by filing Exhibit H, doesn't mean that they are demanding eminent domain at that point. It's just a required filing that then is used as a springboard to later request eminent domain.
Do they have to produce the people that have signed the easements or can they just say, we have these people that have signed the easements, trust us?
Um, that is in litigation in a couple of counties. I know Story County, it's getting pretty heated. Ultimately, the actual language of the easement is, um, re- is submitted to the IUV because they have to approve the easements and then the easements are then reported in the various county reporters' offices.
I just, I, I just feel like the numbers are a little bit off.
Well, Exhibit H is a complete, I don't think either. I think there'll be more people on there. Some people aren't on there that signed. Cause they, they do partial, so there'll be another set of people that are put on there.
That have signed?
That haven't signed.
So I, I just wanna make sure we're clear here. You know, right now, we're at sixty-four percent of easement miles acquired and this is a year out from construction. So we are hopeful. I mean, our land agents didn't just stop working because we submitted the Exhibit H. So it's not the case.
You have submitted the Exhibit H.
I know, I'm saying our land agents didn't stop working because we submitted the Exhibit Hs. They will continue to work with landowners and and they, those Exhibit Hs will be removed as easements are signed.
Did you just say you submitted Exhibit H?
Not, not in this county.
Oh, not, okay, not in this county.
We are in other, yes. I should have been more clear. I'm so sorry.
That's okay. I'm just like, you said you didn't and then you said we.
No, in other counties.
Partial in this county, because I'm, I've been put on Exhibit H in this county. If I look at IUV, I've been on there, so. So partial of this county's been done already.
So you're in favor? You signed your easement?
No, I'm on the Exhibit H where they wanna take eminent domain on me. And then I looked at Exhibit H and they, they show even now the routes changed on my place. So now it's even more on my land. And I was against it before. Land agents I was talking to before, they were, I was saying, don't put it in my woods. So, and you know what happened? Now this Exhibit H is showing it's even more in my free land. Cause my lands wanna be all trees eventually. So what do you say to a person like me that has no corn, don't grow corn? And I can't grow trees on it. They destroy all my trees and they say you can't plant trees. So what do you say to, what's your sales pitch?
So, I mean, I would say if the, if the ethanol plant has to shut down and the corn growers, they can't sell their corn, they're gonna go, farmers will go out of business. And so that's gonna. I know, but that will affect the community land values.
Do you?
In the long.
It's a scare attack. I mean, that's like, the sky's falling.
I was gonna stop producing corn if we don't put this pipeline through Crawford County.
I wouldn't say completely, but there will be, we do expect large effects.
Do you agree with that, Kai?
I would agree with it, because I remember the eighties when we had no ethanol production and corn was under a dollar eighty, you know, we actually had a value-added agriculture put into it.
Right.
And, uh, I'm not saying I'm not, corn production will not stop. Would, how it would change, I don't know. Uh, I mean, some, I, like I said, I don't know. I, the whole state of Iowa would change in my eyes, because Iowa, I mean, I think yours fifty-seven percent, I wonder what the percentage of Iowa's employees, the whole state are in need of corn production in the state of Iowa. I mean, you go down to Des Moines and look at all them office buildings and somehow they're tied to agriculture.
Agriculture, yes.
Which is, uh, corn production is a huge part of that.
And the corn production, if you have that drastic shift like you had from the eighties, then you look at the seismic change to livestock production that happened as a consequence to that. So yes, it would affect corn, but it's a trickle over to livestock as well.
Exactly, that's. I hate to see eminent domain in your position. I get that. I, so it's a tough boat.
Yeah.
Well, it's a corn producers, then you would think farmers would all be against, would all wanted to sign up. And in our group, most of them are farmers and most of them are against this.
That we are getting that reaction. I will, I will not lie, but there are people that are not against us. Um, that are, you know, sixty-four percent easement miles, I won't say people, but have signed on. And we do have, you know, there are favorable news articles written. We, we're trying to change, that's part of the reason why I'm here is to like tell you guys the truth and really why we're going after this project and try to curb some of the falsehoods that are out there right now.
I do have a question and, and I've not seemed to get a good answer about this. I mean, that really doesn't have a lot to do with Crawford County directly or even Iowa. You know, we're pumping all this into the ground, but they're in North Dakota and there's a space under there for a reason and we're compressing the gas to create the liquid to propel it, you know? What happens underground? We release this into the, into the geo.
Yeah.
Structure. I mean, or could we do anything that'd be destabilizing up there in North Dakota? That obviously would affect them, but could affect clear down to here?
Um, I don't believe so. Like, I'm not a scientist, but I do know that the rock formations, like this is being done in other places right now. Um, and basically what happens is Riley might know more of the science of it, but I do know that it's being pumped into these specific rock formations that over time it will have some kind of scientific reaction where it will crystallize. Um, and then, you know, at the end of the day, we're talking about CO2, so it, the science says that it will crystallize. If it doesn't, it is CO2. So it's used for everything that's out in the air right now, you know, as a gas. So if it goes back to a gaseous state, that would be an issue. That's not what we want to happen. And it's scientifically not going to happen, but it is just CO2.
Well, that's, and that's just a curiosity I have. I mean, maybe it's really not a big factor, but it seems to me that it's something we should be thinking about. Human history has been, across the course of human history, we've thought we were doing something that wasn't gonna bother anything and in the end. Human history has been, across the course of human history, we've thought we were doing something that wasn't gonna bother anything and in the end, it, it bothered us a lot.
Well, I think it helps that it is being done currently, um, in other places. I know, like in Illinois, there's, that's where Navigator is going.
So you get somewhere, it's already crystallized somewhere?
Um, well, I know that it's being pumped. To say that it's been crystallized, I'm not sure, but it is pumped underground. I think it takes a lot of time to crystallize. Yeah.
Yeah, a long time. Geologically, the reason it's going to North Dakota is a thing called shelf rock. Uh, we can pump underneath that shelf rock where it'll be permanently supressed. In Iowa, unfortunately, there's not a shelf rock, um, so it would be. It would, what was that?
Webster City. That's what they use for.
Oh, so Webster City does have shelf rock?
Not shelf rock, but they have a catching system underground.
Yes.
Underneath the ground out there.
Yeah.
And, uh, they, they use it for storage.
Yeah, see, that shelf rock geologically is very convenient because the carbon's not allowed, it, it won't allow it to go back up. But it would be easier if the ethanol plants individually could pump that CO2 right underneath them, underneath the shelf rock. But Iowa's not fortunate yet, or enough to have the shelf rock, which.
Most of the garden grown.
Yeah, yeah, um, so we have to pump the CO2 all the way up to where shelf rock's available for us to go underneath it. That way it doesn't come back up. Cause part of the plan is the permanently supplestrate. That way it doesn't get back out into the environment. Uh, that's part of the deal. It's not gonna be used for enhanced oil recovery, anything like that. It's part of the, yeah, for the, the tax credit. I don't think we can use it for anything else. Uh, it has to go underground permanently and stay there for hopefully, you know, a million years or whoever else. You know, it, it may never, ever come back up, so.
A lot of the articles I've read on, on this mention that, uh, someone has in the past advertised. The pipeline as a partial solution to climate change. I noticed there was a, a lack of any comment on that here today. Is that not a, a selling feature? That someone is pushing anymore and pushing the corn angle because it's true or you think it just plays better?
I think both of them are true. Um, I mean, they have worked, they have talked about the climate angle. And that is something scientifically and, you know, that's being pushed for federally, um, which is why, you know, there is the forty-five Q tax credit. Um, but just because we're talking about the farmer and corn growing side of it here today. Doesn't mean that that's not true. That is just as true as the climate side of the law.
I believe that's true.
Wouldn't have to be the climate side or we wouldn't even worry about it again. We would be out of this conversation.
Yeah.
So, since you're here and answering questions, what as a county, you know, uh, do we have to do? Do we have to be prepared for, uh, having this event? Is there something that the county should be? You know, what are, what are our responsibilities? Uh, do we need to have an emergency plan, uh, the setbacks and so forth and so on? You know, what, what do we need to do? Is that, is that one of the reasons you come to business?
Yes, so we can talk about that. Uh, I, I know on the Iowa State infographic, there is, or, you know. Uh, there is some information about the federal requirements and how regarding setbacks, we are going. And a lot of the requirements, we are going above beyond. Uh, as far as emergency plan, we do have one person whose name is actually on that document as well, Rock Dylan. Uh, he is our, he's going around and talking to the emergency managers in different counties, setting up times for trainings. Uh, and there will be multiple trainings, so it's not just gonna be a one and done.
They're first, I did the whole thing.
Yeah.
That's, the best thing to do is evacuate, uh, isolate spill or leak area at least a hundred meters, three hundred thirty feet. Consider initial down, when evacuation, at least a hundred feet or a hundred meters, which is three hundred thirty feet. If there is a fire, like if it's in a tank or a railroad car on fire, isolate for a half a mile. Also consider evacuation half a mile. It's, I mean, this, this is nothing. As you, as you would think of, of like propane or natural gas, I mean, that's.
It doesn't affect.
Going up or down.
No, it's non-plammable.
Dioxide, it's not, this is what we're breathing out right now. This is what's in fire extinguishers.
Exactly. It's in a lot of things, actually. Yeah.
It's, uh, yeah, it's just carbon. I mean, the only thing is, and it probably isn't as dangerous as direct, if you have, if you have an anhydric. Field, have you ever heard about one of them? It just steals air right out of your breath. Yeah, that's what I mean. So this just basically steals your, your oxygen molecules, like condensed air. But if you're back away, am I wrong?
No, you're not wrong. I, and I would add it disperses very quickly, so really unless you're, like I said, in the, not calling A one more. Uh, situation, if you're above the line and it breaks and it bursts out and, well, that's number one, you're gonna have a pressure issue there. You don't wanna be standing close to it. Number two, it will be right in your face, so that. But to say that emergency vehicles wouldn't be able to respond, that's not true. It's not, it's not going to take up all the oxygen. For that large of a space.
I think I should watch this, I watch your own eruption and it does stop the people, it does not people out, it does, they didn't get anybody killed, but forty-five people were happy.
So I will. So, so Tarso, Mississippi, I'm not brought up, that is a lot different though, in our pipeline. That pipeline did not carry pure CO2. It carried CO2 and I always get it mixed up hydrogen sulfide or hydrogen sulfate. And that's what caused all of the, uh, there's been sixty-six other eruptions.
So I think we need to do a little more investigation on that, the safety issue.
To add to that, I'll just go back and talk about the trainings that we're doing with the county emergency response teams. Um, so number one, we have someone reaching out to them right now, you know, a year in advance. We will do trainings with the emergency responders, uh, before and after our full-time staff is hired. So once our full-time staff is hired, they will actually do trainings together. So if something does happen, it's not gonna be, you know, they'll do exercises to respond to an issue.
We currently do that with pipelines that are existing in our county already, so.
And this is regulated. It's something, you know, we have to do this. One of those. Yeah, I'm sorry.
Salphite sulfide is, is stable. So if there, if there is a combination of that, yeah, you're gonna kill a lot of stuff on people, but you're not doing that.
No, it's pure CO2.
I'm not here, I'm not here to defend, I'm just giving answers from what we, what we will respond to.
So what the stats say is that there's been sixty-six reported leaks on the current over five thousand miles CO2 pipelines using gas. And it's five and a half leaks per year or one leak every seven, seven point two miles. The question is, are you planning to, uh, go on above your requirements to avoid that?
Yes, and you know, that's why we've laid that out on that, uh, handout for you. The one with Iowa at the top, yeah. There's a section in the middle that talks about ways we're going, and there's more ways. I'm actually working on putting together a new, um, handout that has more, it's, that's right. That just goes over the federal requirements and how we're going up to do more than what they require. Um, but I'm working on putting together something that has more information, because I know after going to tons of these meetings, we've almost wrapped up this first round. That safety is a huge concern.
Eminent domain is a big concern.
Eminent domain as well. And just to go back to that, as just, just to go back to it, it's not something that we want to do. It's a costly process for us. Uh, it's not fun for anyone. It's something that is necessary in certain situations. In those situations, we would, that would be a like title issue. Where we would, we don't wanna use it with disagreements with landowners. We want to work with everyone. But there are times when you need it just because of a title issue.
But you're not a utility, so I don't even understand why you call yourself a utility. That's where kind of part of this big argument comes from.
That would be.
Be a utility. You're not essential to the public.
I think that's something that the I U B decides.
What? Well, somebody should be able to explain how you're a utility. I mean, you can tell me to go in the Iowa code, okay, but it should be obvious to us what you, how you can be considered a utility. That should be obvious. It's not obvious to me, but somebody should be able to tell us.
Well, the only thing that I would say, if, if, like, I, I, I agree with where you're going. I mean, obviously, we, all, all five of us agree with that. But, uh, I, I mean, the only, when you look at what are, are for our, our economy, our corn growers, obviously. And what it, what it does for our economy, the importance of it. And, and so from the safety aspect, that to me would be where this, you know, if you, if you're wanting to probably get the eminent domain. Is, he's got a whole different situation where he's wanting to keep his trees.
Yeah.
To get that, I think Brazil should have been made to keep a bunch of theirs. We probably have a lot less of this to start off again with. But, uh, you know, if you, uh, if you, if you look at it from that safety aspect or the eminent domain. I mean, that to me is where it's, where it's creeping in, where it's really bothering the folks, you know what I mean? And, and obviously it's bothering us. I mean, you know, using the eminent domain, you know, to serve the electric needs or, you know, that, those type of things. But, you know, you serve a fraction and it's a sizable fraction for us. Of the, the community as far as what we depend on economically. And without that, you know, since the east-western side of the state gets forgot a lot with the economic development aspects. You know, we, we, we damn sure depend, pardon my French, we did, we depend on agriculture heavily here. So I get where you guys are coming, where you have a necessity, but it still doesn't necessarily create you as a utility. And so that's probably where this is coming from. So if you're really wanting to answer our, our concerns here, that's probably where you need to start looking.
Yeah.
And then helping with his trees.
Yeah, I would, have you spoken with the, your land agent?
Land agents, I don't know. Cause if somebody signs, they just moved the line, so they just pushed it more on my list.
And we don't hear good. That's part of it. They just, they follow people around and there was an elderly gentleman that they literally hu- hunted him down at coffee. And they say, oh, your neighbors are signing and you're holding everything up and really use some head games with people. And even, you know, you guys saying that all these people have signed up, I think people disagree with that, that their, that their neighbors haven't. Nobody, they, they can't find anybody that has and these numbers just keep growing. And in fact, there's more people not saying they're not signing up and you guys just keep saying the numbers are growing. Is there anybody checking to make sure that these people have actually signed on that dotted line?
Yes, it is public record, so.
The recorder, the recorder's office, yeah. I'm, I'm doing a couple, three abstracts to have some of carbon solutions.
Okay.
Just go over and ask me.
I will.
Yeah.
So these numbers are.
Crawford County is higher than a lot of the counties, but there's some like that where that Bruce is from, that's behind this, that county's really low. Cause they know that guy. We don't know that guy. I never even heard of that guy until this pipeline, so.
It is causing a lot of, uh.
That, that is exact city.
Uh, it's Harden County, I think. And that's one of the lowest counties that has, uh, sign. So what happens if, say, you only get fifty, sixty percent, I U B doesn't grant you the, you know, eminent domain? You have a Plan B, can you still get it done?
Um, if we don't have eminent domain, I'm not sure. I, I mean, if we don't get that state permit, I don't think we can do much at all. But the easement, I mean, the people who've signed the easement, they are still paying what they got paid and it's, we're just out of luck. But I think we are pretty confident that we would get, um, that state permit.
When we see, remember those, that they, they went everybody and, and got leases for, for, there's oil in Crawford County, if you remember that.
That was back in the eighties.
And, and they, I mean, they signed leases and leases and leases and then nothing, so they just, they just.
They just dropped off the engineer.
Yeah, on the, on their lease that, that, uh, Summit Carbon does, they, they've got an amount that they've already paid, it's like ten dollars. I think that's what it says. So then, then, um, if it doesn't go through, it doesn't go through. Either cancel the lease, um, some of the wind towers, what I did the abstracts on, they had easement areas and they just canceled the easement area.
So they can't sell that easement to someone?
They just, they just released it and, and a certain other company could come, um, and, and do it.
I will say that easement language will stay the same though.
Yeah, yeah, easement language stays the same. And then, and if, if they're denied the state, uh, permit, it's over for them.
In Crawford County.
Yeah, well, I don't, they're, 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 they're doing, they're doing just what the wind farm people do. I mean, there was a guy down southeast Crawford County that developed those and you guys had the issues with that. And it's no different than the ones up by Vale and, and Sussley. They, they do it all preliminary before they get their permits.
I'm cutting, oh, sorry.
Ask, ask Mr. Nothing how much he gets as a, as a, uh, kickback from, for human loss.
Kind of stop it over and hope you get out of their way.
Cause one person's off here, please. It's hard to follow three conversations.
Yeah.
There was a partial Exhibit H from Crawford County filed, I mean, which is really interesting, the final Exhibit H.
We also got a question, this got brought to my attention, and this has to do with our roads.
Okay.
And I guarantee you don't wanna cross Paul.
No, we do not.
Okay, uh, I was under the impression you bore under, is that correct?
Yes, well, we've been asking.
Why does I, why do I get something sent to me that looks like that? To go where it shows you guys are, I mean, they're digging out.
We haven't started, uh, any construction.
Well, I know you, this isn't, this isn't necessarily you guys, this, but it's just showing where a pipeline is going under a roadway and they. Maybe you've got a better way to do it, so this won't be something that we'll have to see with you. But that's what I, my big concern is that whenever you disrupt a roadway, I don't know if you ever looked where you, when you're driving down the highway and there's that black patch. It goes all the way across where somebody probably put a pipe, pipeline in and then, and everywhere we got a culvert, for goodness sakes. You know, the road will kind of keep giving away as years go by. Well, I, I'm, obviously, we don't wanna have a lot of that. That's the expense for us, but the, uh. What, what is your process to, on, on our roadways? I mean, we're trying to figure out who you have to have easement with. I mean, really, we don't own what's under them roads, our landowners do. I mean, we have already the easement, um, we already have the easement on the, on the roadway itself, sixty-six from the center. But, uh, how much, I mean, we wanna make sure you're minimizing your disruption to the roads. Because obviously that's costing our taxpayers a lot to take care of these roads to begin with.
Yeah, we do too. That's why we're having continuous, I mean, we've been in contact with Paul for a while now, trying to make sure. You know, we're showing him, I'll let you go into this.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, um, you know, initially we start out, um, you know, open up dialogue with Paul, kind of get an idea of, um, some of the regulations. And different permitting regulations that exist in the county. Um, you know, we're basically wanting to know, you know, how wide is your right of ways? Um, they, they give us basically a center line, that way we can come and talk to Paul and say, hey, these are some of the possible road crossings we're gonna have. You know, uh, what are some of the issues you may foresee us, you know, running into? Uh, we've also gone through and done, uh, we do a thing called Turn Three Sixty, which basically we Google camera each one of the road crossings. Um, so we can kind of see before, during and after, and that's public knowledge.
Uh, yeah, it's on Google, like if you go to Google Maps right now today, you can drop the little man on the street and see. And we'll do that before and after construction. But another thing we're doing that I'll just add is we're asking the engineer, are you okay with open cut on this unpaid road? We obviously would never do that on a paid road. If he says no, that's a no. So he knows these roads better than we do, obviously. So that's why we're looking to him, um, on guidelines. And, you know, what he wants to see there.
Yeah, but basically any, uh, from there, any other crossing method that, you know, we wanna use, maybe some drainage issues that come up. He knows the height of the road, the depth of the ditch, you know, how low does he want us at this particular crossing?
Working with him that way on our, on our waterways too. I mean, whether it's the, I mean, you're going under the boyer here and, and you'll probably find some soul. And maybe it might have bothered the soul, but, you know, you've got a few waterways. I mean, like I said, if you're right on the borderline where our erosive, highly erosive soils are, I mean, we're, we're concerned about it.
And that's something I probably need to bring up with Paul, just to see if we can maybe put a microscope on some of these water crossings. Um, we have a team that's working with the D N R, so any, you know, federally regulated land you may have in the county. They're already on top of that. We have a guy, an engineer who works with Iowa, Iowa D O T. So like Highway thirty, um, different highway crossings that are, you know, maintained by the Department of Transportation. He's working with them to make sure we're crossing them correctly, railroads, we have a guy working railroads as well. The Department of Transportation, he's working with them to make sure we're crossing them correctly, railroads, we have a guy working railroads as well, so. Um, mainly more to the brass tacks stuff, making sure we're crossing roads. The way the county wants to see us cross roads, the D O T and the railroad.
Okay.
I have a question.
Yeah.
What if the county doesn't want you to cross their roads? What if we as a county, you can use eminent domain on the county and say we're going through your road, whether you want us to or not?
I, I think the best thing, the only thing we could do is, you know, make sure we follow the county's guidelines and regulations and. Put a permit packet together and it can get denied or approved. Um, but, uh, the best thing we can do is just make sure we follow the guidelines of the engineers, planning and zoning. And then from there, put our package together and, uh, you know, then it's up to the approval process, so. Uh, I guess that's not really up to us, we can just do the best we can to make sure we're.
Is it up to us as supervisors?
Do the, the, the crossings go to the board of supervisors in this county? I believe they do.
Yeah, so Paul, who had it presented to you, so, or whoever does in the engineering office would have to.
Paul brings his recommendation, yes. And he's a stickler, so we.
He told us that we.
He has a very keen eye for attention to detail, so. Yeah, he's, he's.
We're, we're very proud of him.
Yeah, yeah.
He's the best.
Yeah.
One more question, and then I, I think I'll be done. Uh, do the landlords have to carry special insurance to protect themselves? Nope.
Absolutely not, no, and I'm glad you brought that up because I used to work in insurance, so I know I've worked in large farm package insurance. No, they do not. So we, since we owned the. Pipeline, all of the liability, and this is in the Eastman as well, I've actually, this is a common question, so I've been looking into this as well. All the liability falls onto us. The only time that the landlord would be liable is if they intentionally, like intentionally broke the line or caused damage to it. So if they went out there and took an accident. And that is, so that does not include, oh, your combine gets stuck in it, hits the liner damages, that's an accident. So that's back on us. We are holding the landlord harmless.
Do you have a copy of that easement policy that the supervisors can look at, or is it different for you?
It is different, so we have a blank, it's not blank, but a blank easement, that's just like a draft that we start with every landlord. Um, they can add things that they want, so if they don't think that the liability, um. Section is specific enough, or they don't think another section is specific, or they want to add something else specifically to their land. They, we can add that in there. But there is just a blanket draft.
So the one that is, uh, gonna go cold.
Is the one just, is the one.
Just some questions that, uh, you know, when they, people see things gonna be on our agenda, the phones start lighting up. Even then it starts blowing up, which is great, I love it. Um, all of the questions, I didn't know the answer to a single one of them, and so that's why I brought them forward, of course, it's such a concern. The resounding part of it is, you know, the people that, that willingly have signed up. It's not for government to say you can't do what you want to on your own property, we have to protect the people around them. We cannot, it is just so un-American to be told that, yes, you own this property, spent your, your family for a hundred years, but work on it through. That is just, uh.
Also, it's, uh, foreign orders, like foreign investors have to put money towards it too, so it's kind of like foreign companies telling us what to do, so.
Here's Iowa for the picking, you know, we've got, uh, towers that people don't like, and I've got it all going underneath, and everybody's just coming through. It's all moving, and we're not really gonna be the ones benefiting, it's big corporate America, big investors. That are gonna profit from all of this that we're all going through. And I say it again, for the ones that want it, yay, but the ones that don't, should not.
I have to.
Should not shut down.
I hate using this example, but I have to. When you think about Keystone, um, nobody wanted it, and it got shut down and our gas went crazy. So now it's like you don't realize the benefit, because this is a preventative project, like this is something that's going to help. You haven't seen the effects that we do predict, a lot of people predict to come along with these regulations, we haven't seen those effects yet, but. I can almost guarantee, you know, once you do, you would say, oh. Cause I shouldn't have that, but I mean, that's.
And I, I get you have a tough job, uh, selling this, uh. But you always have to try and treat people the way you want them treated, and I think, um, overstepping is just always hard. Trying to protect what is ours and, uh, having the government tell us that we will do what we want because you can. It's just hard, especially for us, hardworking people, to work hard for that land.
Yeah, well, and I, I'll just add, I really do appreciate all the questions that you guys have asked, because that's why we're here.
I know.
As we want, you know.
We're going without any questions.
Yeah, well, it happens sometimes, and you know, we want you guys to be able to give that information, you know, whether it's what people want.
Absolutely, and they'll call, and if we don't know the answer, uh, we can't, we want to know the answer, we want to be able to tell them to prove they're not, as this beat them alive. And the facts will set us free.
Well, you have my contact information.
I do, so I do.
Yeah, we were talking about the special conditions on the easements, which is exhibit C, or everybody files them. Now that more things are coming out, it's interesting with insurance. Is the company gonna be willing to go back to people who aren't signed for easement and change this season?
So that's one thing that. I haven't been asked that specific question, I don't think people have asked, you know, if they've already signed and mine, I thought you're not.
Money, just special conditions.
So the special conditions, I mean, I think the same rule applies, uh. Uh, that once the easement is signed. And this, I mean, that's, nothing's changed as far as the liability or any of that, that's all stayed the same, so. You, in the Eastman, it says you will not be held liable, we're holding the landlord harmless, that's insurance language, like. It's unless you go out there with an axe or a bat bow or something and intentionally hit the line, uh, that would be on the landlord.
Yeah.
Well, and I really talked about the liability, I'm just an example. My concern is, I might not find that big.
What, what does that mean, treasure?
I will look at this.
Go ahead.
My concern is, I went up the Iowa land, um, records and I've been following the easements. The people who have signed, there were six elderly people signed last December, they have absolutely none, no exhibit C. On their easements, so then we have the ethanol plant, by the way, the Dennison Ethanol Plant gets signed a couple weeks ago. They have eighteen different special conditions on their easements. So explain to me how, how Summit can feel comfortable, and all of those six people were all, I don't know if I said this, they're elderly people. And I'm sure, and I talked to two of them, who said Summit came to my living room, they were the nicest people. They told me that all my neighbors have signed, they said it was a done deal, and I'll have to assign this line, they didn't even get a lawyer. So I guess I'm concerned that they can't go back now and lawyer up and say, you know, we gotta kind of take it. To me, that's elder abuse, but you know, I, I guess I haven't gone out to their families and see if they want to bite it or not in regard. But, so you're telling me that Summit is not willing to go back to the table for some of these votes and get some stuff from exhibit C. And for an example, everybody who's filed so far, the common number of, the average number of special conditions on their easement is three point eight. So compare that to the ethanol plant, who I think is probably part. Or Summit is eighteen, so that's a big, you know, for the, for the board of supervisors especially, I wanted you to hear that. At the ethics behind it, I think there's a big question mark.
So just, if I could respond to that, I would say the ethanol plant has a lot of different interests, um, in the project than an average landlord. I was in Plymouth County last week, we did have an elder, elderly man and everybody was concerned, and absolutely, we. Um, told him, you know, speak to your family lawyer, if you're concerned with something, because he was concerned with things in the easement. Uh, we are not trying to, um, deceive anyone. The easement. The difference in our pipeline, uh, company and other pipeline companies is that we are formed by a farming company. We are an agricultural based company, so. I think a lot of the difference between our easement and a lot of other easements is we are putting in things to protect the landlord more than other, um, pipeline companies. But just to go back to the, you know, the contrast between ethanol plant easement and the other landowners. I would say it is a bit of a different situation there.
I'm not really, because I looked at the different things in there, and every one of them I would want to lay sent to far. Every one of those conditions, there's nothing that's specific to a business on their, you know, special conditions. They're just more knowledgeable about the process, more knowledgeable about what could happen to their land. They took a lot of the approximately, um, out of the easements and said, exactly, this is where you're gonna be going through our lines, you can't move it. You know, to suit your needs when you start working on it. And also, we were told that, um, it's a hundred foot, fifty foot temporary easement. And also, I guess, I'd like to know, since ours is in the middle of the farm, it's a currently C R P land. Um, it's not easy to get to is one of the reasons we put it in the C R P. So what kind of entryway is Summit gonna need? Are they gonna have to go across the, the roads over here? The lines over here, a creek is in the middle, and this is all currently being farmed, so they're gonna have to go through all of this land. To get to the proposed pipeline, so that's another.
Yeah, I would say that's something to speak with your land agent on, because they can pull that up and look at it with you. Um, there will be a, we will have to get access to work on the pipeline, so that, that is something that I would say work with the land agent on to figure out something that works for you. Um, that at least disturbs your land.
Okay, I mean, but that's another condition, that the land gets compacted and that soil is not, maybe we all know what compaction does.
Yeah, well, we, I would say.
The landlord, I mean, the land agent has stopped, they're not even talking to us anymore, because we're in exhibit H, so. We are down for eminent domain, but they haven't, they haven't contacted me. I didn't know who it is now, because I know they got new ones, it used to be Patty Ward, so I have no idea now who it is.
But it seemed like they contract them out, I mean, why don't we do it in-house, uh, land agents, because they contract them out, but then they can just say, oh, those, that, those land agents were bad. Well, then they can just throw them to the woods and move on to another one.
So Patty Ward is the land agent?
Used to be, I don't know who it is now, and John Weyner and, or Jack, something like that, I don't know.
But Patty Ward, you do believe was your land agent?
Yeah, she was on that originally.
So she'll come by and get you to sign, and then she notarizes your signature?
I have no idea, we didn't get that part, I have some, I, we have been knocking at the door and, and yeah, this, oh. She's the one that always.
Then I'm sorry, I didn't let you do before, um, forty is what they said they have to sign so far.
Forty?
That's a, they're in the forty range.
But that's landlord or partisan, because there's a big difference, and that's what the number.
I just asked how many easements have been signed, she said.
Yeah, that's about right.
That's all right.
Forty easements could equate to sixty-four percent.
Yeah, so we have like about thirty-one that's still, I don't know, Summit wouldn't provide us a list of landlords. Apparently they can give it to the sheriffs and to the county attorney, but they can't give it to the other landowners. So we have yet to know the official list of who actually is impacted in the county. We got ours by actually going to the platform to, to, putting your map, original. Generic map against the platform and getting it on us.
Well, I will say, you know, there is a reason why we're not giving out those names, it's just for people's privacy. There is, I mean, we've had people, you know, surveyors, um, physically attacked, and we've had people that workforce threatened. We don't want that happening to landowners, uh, you know, who signed, so that is why we, we haven't released, um, but.
Erica, speaking about the surveyor, she said with permission, they went on, there's no permission, we were forced to do it. There was no permission.
I was referring to the soil resistivity, I don't know much about the surveying side, yeah, the, the soil resistivity is a whole different thing. Uh, they're just sticking a couple probes in the ground, um, usually off a right of way, but I think the land side is dealing, if we were to have to go on to a, a property, I think the land side's dealing with that, but I have. No idea how they're doing that, um.
That's applied to I U B, because they're not following the law that said it's supposed to be certified registered letters and. You know, we didn't get those, but that can be overlooked, so.
So about the privacy, I respect the need to keep certain things private, uh, especially from the public at large. It just. This is a very small thing, but just what struck me is there seems to be a disconnect between the company's need and want for privacy with landowners and your land agents. Sales approach to people, because a common theme I've heard several times today is this tactic to tell a landowner that all their neighbors have signed. So they're the odd one out, and so you're not, there's not a lot of privacy there, I know that's not you doing it. But, um, you know, maybe if privacy is important to the company, maybe relay that message to the land agents.
Yeah, I would, I think that's definitely something that needs to be brought up, hearing it today, um. I would point, point out the difference, though, that, the name dropping and then just saying neighbors.
I, I agree.
Yeah.
I would say, what it sounds to me is that some of these people that need to just meet with. Summit Carbon Solutions themselves, eliminate the mental person and sit down and have honest conversations with the, with you folks.
And I know for a fact our project.
I mean, they're probably getting paid for every foot they sign up, so. You know, I appreciate this conversation, everybody kept it civil and, and a lot of good questions were asked. Uh, does anybody else have any questions before we wrap this up? I mean, now's the time, go ahead.
Okay, oh, we'll exhibit H, I'm trying to talk about that before, when is, are you gonna go back and see when the rest of Crawford's exhibit H is going to be?
Yes, we have written that down, to see, uh, to get that information to the board.
And will it be given to the board or landlords or who will it be?
If it gets to us, then it's become public.
Yeah.
We'll publicize that, how, Chris?
If, if it comes, it'd be public information, I mean, we, we, you can request that or we can get.
Be on the I U B, too, on it.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, the auditors all.
If it's updated, it should be updated on the website, there might be a small lag.
People seem to think they're filing it today.
Boy, I should know pretty quick, uh, be able to relay that back to you, it sounds like.
Okay, and then the other question I had was, at the landlord's meetings, we were told about monitoring the line. They said there would be an airplane that would go over the line every two weeks. Well, now another landlord from a different county went to a meeting and they said drones were going to be used. Every week, there would be a drone over, and they said, on our property, and they said, you'll get used to it, don't worry. So, and then, so what is it, is it gonna be airplanes, is it gonna be drones? And if it's drones, that brings up a whole nother level of liability, of access to the land. Of what happens if the pressure's in the bean, are you gonna go into our field and get it, even though that's not part of the easement? I mean, I, I guess I want to know how it's gonna be monitored before I even worry about drones.
Yeah, so that is a regulation, uh, to fly the line every two weeks, um, step four, five days a. Um, but I have also heard, I haven't heard which, whether it will be a drone or an airplane.
So do we know that? Because that's pretty important as far as safety.
They probably do know that, I just don't have that information.
How do we find out?
Yeah.
You can look, well, you could look online at the D O T, the Feds regulations, but that would be a lot, so we can look for that and figure out and ask our contractors.
And if they, if they use a drone, are they gonna film it so our whole farm gets filmed? I mean, where's the privacy in using a drone, or is it just, I don't know, I mean, I don't know how it works, I need more information.
It would just be flying where the pipeline is.
And filming it.
I'm not, I would assume that they would film it to. See if everything is, because the whole point of the regulation is safety. I'm not sure if they would be looking at it live or filming it to review.
And I, I don't know about drones, how far away can you put them like in the, I don't know, the Dennison courthouse and film our field? Can you fly it that way, or does it have to be on our lane? Does it have to be?
Depends on the drone, you can fly them across continents. Give, give it another year, it'll be way better than it is.
I will imagine, yeah, I, I, those are questions that we.
That's kind of what we do, most users, search it, so, so, the, at one spot, they can fly probably quarter, quarter miles.
So, I mean, that technology's ever evolving, see what our US military can do with drones from. And overseas and fly them on, off of these states here, so, you know, what, what they say today in regards to drones. A year from now it could be, I would speculate they would want to, from what I know of the pipeline that goes along H Avenue, they fly that.
They fly that.
Every two weeks with an airplane or helicopter, so they're visually looking, seeing, they're not recording anything that I would know, but.
Yeah.
I have been in an instance where I've been running a, a caterpillar close to that line, within a quarter mile, and. There was somebody there within twenty minutes. Asked me what I was doing. There was somebody there within twenty minutes, asked me what I was doing there. So, I mean, so they do get monitored for safety, way better than you, you would ever expect, from my experience, so.
That's just a concern that I had. I have a lot of information on your part, so.
Scared the hell out of you. It was right there.
And then, I think you specify on the ready stuff and then the, um, consequences analysis and the emergency response plan that's required by that.
I'm not sure when we plan to, I don't have that information, but we, we can get it.
Because that's why we were talking about safety. That should already be filed. I would assume.
It may be filed. I don't have that information. There's a lot of information that we have to file.
My guess is they probably won't file it until they know exactly where the line is. The map code or Williams or whatever it is, we, you're doing yearly, yearly response and then like for the. Wind towers, they just got done with. They walk through all the way up to the top of the wind tower, address facility.
Okay, so you're not sure when it's gonna be?
I would say after, after you look exactly where it's gonna be.
I'm sorry, I'm a B wire.
Very good, emergency.
Okay, I just wondered if you were.
No.
You seem to be answering the question.
No, no, but that's, 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 that's how they've done with map code and the other, the other ones. They fly the, 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 uh, gas line too. It goes down, uh, for example, uh.
Oh, it goes out of the county town.
Shelby?
Goes further south than Shelby.
Okay.
But anyway, yeah.
What's that?
Yeah, no, I don't work for them actually.
I didn't know that.
He already works for you. He works for you.
Oh, good. And then you also, um, said there's no pumping stations in Propper County and that's our act?
Uh, yes, as of right now, today, sitting here, correct.
As of right now, today. What about the valves? Where are they all gonna be located?
Well, I don't have it on the map with me.
Oh, here, I will.
And then, um, what's with the valves? I understand the pumping station is actually like a, a gated area that you have to do. But once with the valve, they just.
That's a safety measure. So, yeah, there's a little red ribbon that are on that map there.
So can you put this, one of the landowners with these little red ribbons, I'm gonna know if it's near our farm or not. So where are the land?
You would know. If it was yours, you would have already been contacted by your location.
No, we're just speaking with the land agent, so I probably don't know.
Have you had any contact with them?
No, I haven't. We've, we've already said no.
Yeah, I'm not exactly sure. That map's kind of a zoomed out version. I'm not exactly sure, but we have to purchase that land. So that wouldn't be.
So if I go to Iowa land records, I could find land that Summit has purchased and do the back wave fix. You can tell me. Okay.
And those are, if you want to know how those work, those are, were a safety measure. So if there isn't any kind of, uh, breach in the line, they monitor the pressure and they automatically shut. So it's just another safety measure.
But is it down there as out of the ground?
Yes, it's a small area that has a valve station. It's just a little, I used to have a, I should have brought the picture example, but. It's just a small area with a little above ground appearance and that's the valve.
About a half mile. The west side.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah. That one's probably gonna be worse.
Shut off. This, this one could be automatic. There's that one. I don't know.
I think they switched.
Yeah, and that one I will say would probably be larger than the one we would have because that, I'm assuming that one is, so, yes. So it's a larger pipe, so larger valve station.
Some noise associated with that. I know pumping stations are like a great dish.
Not that I know of. It's the only time that they would have. More be working is when, if there's.
Thanks, everybody. I guess one last time. Again, I want to say thanks for keeping it civil, good discussion. Uh, thanks for coming. And as a board, I know that Jean says we need to look up. For those landowners, but we're really trying to look out for both sides.
Yes.
You know, the people that have signed up and wanted through, they're coming through their property. So we're trying to look out for both sides, uh, with respect to both sides. It's a sticky wicket for us to.
I think we're just trying to.
Sir, I don't, I didn't, I don't catch your name.
I live on fifty-nine.
Okay, you know, to get that, you know, the demand that you guys should pay him to.
Like majority rule, I mean, if it goes up high enough, I will, we will cram them.
Yeah, we would have been planting trees thirty years ago throughout the country. We wouldn't probably wouldn't even do it.
Kind of odd that they want to just pull those through trees and stuff. I said they can go to my neighbors. That's why I told the land agents. They signed. They had no objection. So they have land all the way around me. But they just, they don't.
I think maybe some more people with a little more. Cloud maybe could come talk to you later. Yeah, I don't know. I, I just wanted to work out for everybody.
From, from the X.
I'm right by Kirk Rock or someone. I'm right by, I've been on your, the pond that you had that one time.
Okay, alright.
I see that pond every day.
He just wants everybody to have a voice at the table. So could you just make sure that you're giving everybody a voice at the table?
I mean, I was gonna, if you're open, if we could talk to you after this and I could, I mean, our project, if we got a project manager to see, we definitely, we might, things might go a little bit differently.
Just, just tell them that I don't want it on my place and that they can look at the neighbors and see.
Those poor neighbors that I've had now, I mean, I understand, I understand.
The, the, the neighbor.
Poor neighbors, we haven't been involved with that at all. Didn't use any, any, any kind of say in the, like.
It's like, once it, like, once a neighbor signs, you just push it because they have it where they want it. So they just push it more on my place.
That's, that's just essential, like for profit, it, this is, it doesn't really need eminent domain, no, at all.
That's, I mean, that's why.
That's kind of like I'm paying tax money and the tax money I pay, I, and then I have a pickup. I'm putting eighty-five percent of all everything I've done to the house that's going out of my, me, the buy.
I know. Chilling, it's your land. All of it, they've already been doing it.
I'm getting used to it.
That works.
Yeah.
I don't disagree with you. I mean, the Indigo Carbon Solutions group is out there trying to promote car, carbon credits for farmers. And those of us that have been no-tilling and stuff for thirty years, get zero carbon credits, but the guy that's been plowing with Mole Board. He gets, he gets fifty dollars a year. But, so I, I, I understand most sides of it.
It's like I have a farm, I kill it ground and I could have just put in CRP if I was farming it always.
I know, it's, 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 we appreciate you guys coming today, you know. It's, uh, I don't know. You guys never walk into these warehouses, what to expect from the public. And, and I appreciate our citizens being polite and courteous today to this vote, so.
Yeah, we appreciate the questions and everybody's time and everything, so.
We'll just make sure it wasn't a lip service thing. We, we do to work with the, those that are concerned and.
Well, we plan to be back here, so we're, we want to follow up on, you know.
You know, make our job a lot easier if you come back and say, you know, we work with everybody and we, we've made concessions or arrangements. And we've got a hundred percent of the county signed up and everybody could agree that.
I would tell you that the wind turbine people absolutely did that for us and, and, and we appreciated that, you know.
So if that's possible, that'd be great. Make our job easier.
Just one more thing, when you do come back, because we have a little bit more advanced rumors because we were able to tell that group that. People are working and they can't get off and we have people out of town, but there's more landowners who are very concerned and.
So we are trying to schedule, my team, I have somebody that calls and she tries to schedule them a month in advance. Sometimes, you know, the agenda isn't ready yet, so it's just, we try to schedule it a month in advance. But when that agenda is posted, it's not up to.
So somehow maybe our, our board could get it out to us rather than just Friday. I don't know how to do.
We actually, uh, heard about it last Tuesday after the meeting and then our agendas are always posted on Friday. So that's kind of.
The state sheriff is in there. So anyway, there's, there's more people concerned, but.
Alright, appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Have a good day.
You were just ranting.
We're no fun now. Well.
Alright.
Citizens input, quick.
Yes, I have twenty-six questions in your alphabet.
Alright. Thanks, yeah.
Thank you, Dan.
Appreciate you being.
You, you're the ones who call passes.
Well, you had twenty-six questions.
You buy me lunch.
That sounds like, sounds like a good plan anyway.
Captain.
Make sure you don't leave them out. Everybody was courteous to pick that snacks.
As far as foreign investors, staying high, they're not buying bears and ginseng either.
Well, or any of them, everybody. Everybody's.
Captain, you have anything for citizens input? Jerry, you have any citizens input?
We will, we will, you can check it out at ours.
Alright.
Alright.
Jerry, you still on there?
Thanks for your help last week, great.
Yeah. Oh, hey, there you are. Do you have anything for us, Jerry, before we adjourn?
Nope, just everybody. Well.
Alright, you did well, Jerry.
Well.
Did well. Bye, Jerry.
Motion to adjourn?
I made one.
Oh, I'll second it. Yes, we got a motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
I said it very loudly.
I didn't hear it.
So, Madam Assistant, or Madam Brotem, you didn't do very good getting his order this week.
And I hope you got every word of that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, guys. Did you get it all wrote down?
I thought we did well, considering the nature of the.
Yeah.
Get it to the points, I think. But I thought that they were getting things turned up.
No.
Those are the questions people had.
Yes, no, I should not put everything down.
No, I think, uh, next week should just dictate the discussion between citizens.
Yes.
Carbon Solutions and the board of supervisors.
How it says it on here is pretty much how it's gonna be.